All right, we'll just wait until we have a changeover. A little marquee, all right. Let's call to order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, council members Asatrian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Kasakian.
Here. We have your report, please.
The agenda for Tuesday, November 1st, 2022, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Wednesday, October 26th, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
May we have the item read into the record that was before us today?
Yes. Public works regarding adoption plans and specification and advertise for bids for the Artsakh Avenue Arts and Entertainment District Improvement Project, a resolution adopting the plans and specifications for the Glendale Arts and Entertainment District improvements on Artsakh Avenue project, specification number 3893, and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian, member of City Council. The item before you is a representation of a very exciting project that we anticipate to reinvigorate the Arts and Entertainment District, our downtown Glendale businesses and visitors to downtown Glendale. It's been in the works for a while. It was four years ago that council awarded the contract to Studio 111 to start the design of this project. We've been before this council, couple of occasions, bringing you up to speed as to the progress of the design. And although Public Works is going to take over the construction, the bidding and construction of this project, it's been a multi-departmental effort, including Community Development Department, as well as Library Arts and Culture that were involved in the selection of the public art pieces that will be installed as part of this project. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Sarkis Uvanesian, our deputy Public Works Director slash city engineer, for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian and members of City Council. This is the Glendale Arts and Entertainment District Improvements on Artsakh Avenue project brief overview. The anticipated construction date for this project will be sometime in early spring or April 2023, and construction end date would be one year after that, in April of 2024. Today, we'll talk about the project purpose and the scope, some of the construction phasing, schematics of the design, project impacts, the notification process, as well as address any questions that you may have. So the project is primarily located on Artsakh Avenue between Wilson Avenue to the north and Harvard to the south. It's gonna entail a realignment of the roadway to a one-lane direction, traveling from north to south. It's going to improve walking areas, maintain access to our parking garages, which are very critical to the businesses and the tenants, designate the street for special areas, primarily in the north block. We're still gonna have the opportunity to close off that north block during special events, concerts, or city or community events. There'll be relocation of some mature palm trees that currently exist in the corridor, some new traffic striping, signing, and signal improvements. There'll be the incorporation of some public art features, public art sculptures, a variety of street and site furnishings, very fun, very active improvements for the public. Wayfinding signage will be added to the corridor. There'll be some alley improvements just behind Artsakh Avenue, and there'll be the installation of new lighting, low-voltage lighting, pedestrian lighting, overhead lighting, and there'll be improved roadway surface and ADA improvements overall. As I indicated, the project location is on Artsakh Avenue from Wilson to Harvard Street in the heart of downtown Glendale. You have the Americana and the Glendale Galleria very close by. Let's talk about some of the public art improvements. There's gonna be three public art pieces that have gone through rigorous approvals. The first one's gonna be an overhead public art sculpture called Bountyful, and that will be located in front of the Marketplace Garage on the southern portion of Artsakh Avenue. A second piece is a ground-level public artwork called the Tamik Gohar statue, and that will be on the ground in front of the Exchange Garage at the northern portion. And finally, we'll have our Gateway Public Artwork, otherwise known as the Curtain, and this will be at the intersection of Broadway and Artsakh. So that first overhead public artwork that's called Bountyful, this is a rendering of what that's gonna look like, and that will be installed in front of the Marketplace Garage. The ground-level public artwork, the Tamik Gohar, that'll be installed in front of the Exchange Garage on the north portion of Artsakh. And finally, the Curtain or the Gateway Structure will be installed at the intersection of Artsakh and Broadway on the southern portion. Here is a schematic of the northern block. It also shows the one-way conversion from Wilson to Broadway. Most everyone is familiar with the current closure located in between the parking garage entrances and the exits. That closure will be reopened for one-way travel. However, that area will be closed off again during special events, concerts, and what have you in the future. And then the Tamik Gohar ground-level artwork is indicated here. It's in, it should be approximately around the area of the Urartu Cafe or coffee shop that currently exists in the area. Here's an existing picture of that north block as it stands now, and here's a rendering of what the north block is going to look like. Again, one lane of travel from north to south, and I've also gone ahead and called out the Tamik Gohar structure, ground-level artwork, and approximate location of where it will be installed. Here's a plan of the southern portion of Artsakh Avenue between Broadway and Harvard. Again, one lane of travel predominantly southbound, except until you get to the Home Goods area where it then diverts into two lanes, and you do have one lane maintained northbound between Harvard and the Marketplace Garage entrance. Here's also a outline of where the Curtain Structure is going to go on the southern portion of the intersection at Broadway and Artsakh, and then that Bountyful or the tree sculpture is gonna go in front of the Marketplace Garage on that eastern side. Here's an aerial of what the existing corridor looks like, and here's a rendering of what that corridor will now look like once it's constructed. And again, currently, there's a trellis shown in the area where the Bountyful overhead artwork is gonna be positioned. Let's talk about some of the construction phasing that we will expect to see. Approximately 10 phases, it's a rather extensive project, one of the more extensive projects we've undertaken in a very long time. There's a lot of moving parts, a lot of improvements, but approximately, we're gonna start with all the underground first to get rid of all the underground improvements, to get that out of the way, the street, the street infrastructure, pedestrian infrastructure, landscape lighting, traffic signals, irrigation improvements. And then we're gonna go above ground, and we're gonna construct all the concrete and landscape improvements, the planter areas, the curb ramps, foundations for the public art pieces. Then we'll do the asphalt and concrete and brick improvements. As you may know, the corridor has extensive brick and granite on the northern portion. Those will be removed and replaced to match the new design that we have come up with while maintaining the integrity of that corridor in place. Then we'll follow up with reconstructing the street and resurfacing the street, coming and adjusting any utilities that are necessary, and then put down the final signing and striping, payment markings, and all the signs, the wayfinding signs that we expect to see. Finally, we'll follow that up with the tree relocations, plantings, landscape improvements, and finally, the three public artwork sculptures will be installed. Some of the project impacts that may exist, again, a challenging area to work in. It's predominantly commercial, it's got a lot of tenants, a lot of businesses, so access is very critical throughout the corridor, both the north block and the south block. We also have our critical parking garages that service that entire area. So we're working with our consultant and making sure that our specifications are detailed enough so that the contractor minimizes impacts to the public as much as possible. Walking paths in front of the businesses will be maintained at all times. There will be a driving lane maintained from north to south for most of the time. A lot of the removal and replacements in the street and the driveways that impact the parking garages or the businesses will be done in the evening, so they impact them as minimally as possible and after their businesses have closed. Delivery vehicles may experience some minor delays, but their paths will definitely not be obstructed. Parking garage entrances may be temporarily swapped, keeping in mind peak hours and peak days, and construction may be allowed on Saturdays if necessary. Some of the mitigation, as I indicated, one lane of travel will remain open, sidewalk access will absolutely remain open during all hours, specifically during non-working hours, and there'll be alternate traffic routes as necessary. Street closures will be limited to the work zone, and we'll do improvements one side of the street at a time, so we're not impacting or causing too much inconvenience to the public, and of course, there'll be flaggers by the contractor available during construction times to properly guide traffic if there is a need. Public notification process that we've undertaken and will continue to undertake as part of this project, there's been significant stakeholder outreach and notifications since 2018 when this project started. We have done a final notification postcard to the impacted area a few months ago, and we're gonna be following that up with a foot canvassing of all the businesses to answer any of the questions that the tenants may have, once we have a contractor in place and once we have a final construction schedule start date. We also have a city website, we have two websites for this project, one's hosted by Public Works, the other one's hosted by Community Development, and that explains the project, gives numerous details about the whole process, as well as has the renderings and all the plans and the design concepts and what we've gone through in the last four years. We'll follow it up with a director's letter, one or two months before the start of construction to the impacted area. There is a window area on 125 North Artsakh that's owned by the city. We have posted information about the project, project renderings, and we will continue to post updates on a monthly basis during construction and well in advance of construction. We'll follow that up with three-day door hangers before any critical phase of the project, the businesses and the impacted tenants, and then, as well as a two-week contractor's letter when the contractor's going to mobilize into the area during construction. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Okay. Who would like to, who has questions? Councilmember Najarian?
I do. And I know we had the scope of the improvements are something we had already decided on, but I recall pretty clearly that we were talking about some overhead shade elements. Someone had proposed one with umbrellas. I had given some other visuals from Spain in Malaga. Is that a separate part of this, or did we lose it?
Mayor Kasakian, member of City Council, Councilmember Najarian, we did not lose it, and your recollection is accurate. That was intended for the alley that runs parallel to Artsakh Avenue, as I recall, especially the umbrellas, that was going to provide the shade, but I don't recall there was any shade elements on Artsakh Avenue.
I'm pretty sure.
I'm going, do you know?
Yeah, Councilmember Najarian, we do have various shade elements as part of the site furnishings that are gonna be installed throughout the project. Some of them are some steel canopy shade structures, some steel cabanas. We do have freestanding umbrellas that are gonna be installed throughout the area, to name a few of those shade structures.
Yeah, and that's not what I'm talking about. And I'm pretty sure we had discussed this, and I'm pretty sure there was a consensus on council to go that way, and that's something maybe 20, 30 feet high, suspended between the buildings to give the entire area a shade element. What happened to that?
Mark Berry, I'm gonna ask Mark Berry if he recalls what happened with that.
I mean, I even brought, I even brought pictures of it from those particular examples. And who was that other young lady that went to that other city?
Jennifer Hiramoto.
Jennifer was on it as well, and we had discussed that when she was.
Yeah, we actually looked at that idea, and unfortunately, because of fire code issues and the need for ladder access to those buildings, you'd get a conflict of the ladder with those overhead structures, which really limited the areas where we can have those.
Well, that's the first I'm hearing of it, and had I heard that, I perhaps would've given it a little more thought as to ways to make it happen, because it really makes, it changes the entire, everything that we're doing at ground level is great. I, we all approve that, and it's very inviting, but I think having those, that higher-level shade, giving the entire Artsakh a shade element and artistic element as well, really changes, is a game changer. So I didn't know you looked into it, I didn't know the fire department wasn't happy about that, but I would still like to see some pursuit of that. Do my colleagues sort of remember what I was talking about?
I'm not really.
So I mean, I'm talking about at the second or third-story level, a canopy, if you will, of either, and the visual that was brought in by Jennifer were umbrellas, colorful umbrellas at that level, and it can even be less ornate than that, but the important thing is that it gives the entire Artsakh, both blocks, a nice shade ambiance, which even in the pictures that we have here with the structures, I mean, on page 11, I mean, that looks hot. I mean, it's.
Look at page 14. And I do remember the umbrellas.
Yeah, it looks, it looks very warm, and I think.
Mr. Mayor.
Just that idea, I think we should look into that if we can still do that.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of City Council, that we will go back and have a meeting with the fire department and our staff, engineering staff, and see if we can come up with a solution that will satisfy their concerns, in the meantime, provide some shading for this, for this block.
I think it's, I think it's worth looking into and at least seeing if it's still possible.
Sure.
All right, who else? Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, so I wasn't on council when we had that discussion, but I like the sound of more shade. Unless we could do something else with trees, I see some palm trees which aren't gonna give a whole lot of shade, but anyway, I think the general concept is true, and it's, you know, those hot summers, we want people to feel like this is a place they wanna hang out in the void, so. One question I had is, why is it on the north block that we want to allow cars to pass all the way from one end to the other? Why is that, why is it necessary to open that up in a way that we don't have it open today?
Councilmember Brotman, this project has gone through various stakeholder outreach, various approvals, various discussions regarding the alignment of a one-way, a two-way closed-off area, and ultimately, the one-way option from north to south was selected. This has been going on since 2018, and then council's direction was to pursue this one-way option in 2021, sorry, in 2019 to construction documents and final design documents.
Right, but was there, was there any specific reason why we want a car to be able to traverse the entire length of this block? We don't have that today, right? We're making this more pedestrian, why, why would we not want the car? I mean, I know we need cars to have access to the garage, that's basically the idea, right? But why do we need them to be able to traverse the entire length of the block?
Councilmember Brotman.
Mr. Berry.
If I could chime in really quick. One of the reasons that was done is essentially was identified that we didn't quite have the critical mass of kind of activity in the area to justify that much kind of open space, so the best solution was identified as having that one-way street go through. It does not preclude us in the future, if we do kind of hit that critical mass that we're pursuing for activity, to maybe reconsider that option, but essentially, what we heard from our design consultant was that it was essentially going to be too much open space for not enough people in the area.
That's what we have today, we have all those tables, right? We have people sitting, and that's, yeah, in front of Urartu, we have both sides, it's all open, we have tables, people having their coffee, so we're gonna lose that.
And through that study, they identified that it wasn't used at kind of the capacity that was expected. That was part of the challenge there.
And I would just add, my recollection was the, Councilmember Brotman, was that temporary closure was just intended to be temporary. This open space as proposed as part of this plan is replacing and actually obviously adding to what's there now, and that was, if you're actually gonna close the street permanently, there's another process you have to go through as well, so that closure was always, it's been a long time, but it was supposed to be temporary, and to figure out a larger plan to address more open space, more walkability, and that's what's presented for you, before you today.
And this design, to add to that, this design also allows for the closure of that segment for special events.
Yeah. I mean, I wasn't here through those discussions, and that's always hard when you get a change of council on a long project. You know, my feeling is, I would rather this be more pedestrian than less, and cars being able to traverse the entire block and then move on and basically go through the south block, so somebody could come from Wilson, drive straight through, all the way, and exit on Harvard. It just doesn't seem like, you know, something that we necessarily want in this kind of space. So I'll just say that. The other, the only other comment I have is that I would like to see bicycle parking throughout, you know, both blocks at multiple locations, because I know you said, you know, you're planning to just put them at the major intersections of Wilson, Broadway, and Harvard, but that's not really the way, that's not really conducive to people arriving on a bike. They want the bike to be closer to where they can keep an eye on it and where the activity is, not just kind of check it at the door. So I would like to see if we can accommodate that and put some bike parking in along, along this pathway, and I assume that bikes would just kind of take the same road as, they would just take the traveling road if they wanted to come in to access any of the shops or anything like that, right?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, and I think that's fine, because it'll be, what's the speed limit? What are we gonna put here for the speed limit?
Very slow.
Yeah, but is there a number that goes with that? Is it gonna be 15?
It's, it's, it should be anywhere between 15 and 25, leaning more towards a 15 mile-per-hour speed limit.
Yeah, I would hope. I would hope a 15, you know, well, isn't that the slow? There'll be bumps, right? There'll be the rate. It should be slower than that. I mean, I think people will naturally drive slowly because it's curving and all that, but anyway, I think that makes sense that, you know, it's slow enough that the bike can feel totally comfortable coming down, but, you know, I go in there often, and I, I wanna stop at Urartu. There isn't anywhere to lock my bike in from Urartu right now, so I just, I leave it there, it's pretty safe, and I, but I can keep an eye on it. So I think we should, we should figure out a way to do that, both north and south block, ideally, you know, multiple locations throughout.
Thank you. Anything else? Would like to go next? Councilmember Asatrian?
So I obviously wasn't on council when these decisions were made as well. Actually know the Umbrella Sky Project, and I absolutely love it, and if there is a way for us to do that, I've seen it in person. It really does add a lot of value and artistic features, so if we can make that possible, that would be great. I do love that we currently have that entire space closed off now, and I don't know if that's too late, and I'd like to hear from my other colleagues on that. The southbound, if you can go to the, there is a new cafe, and I believe the owner is also here on the corner of Harvard and.
Harvard and Artsakh.
Artsakh. I'm not sure why we chose to close off the portion in front of the parking lot instead of closing it off for the businesses. Can you walk me through that? What was the logic behind that?
Councilmember Asatrian, in regards to the design, this was the concept that was, again, selected by the consultant and vetted through the stakeholders, the community and council, but to walk you through the change from one lane to two lanes right after the Marketplace entrance to the, I guess, the aisle corridor, right across the elevators, is because of the critical entrance to the parking garage there at the Marketplace. That entrance is the only entrance that allows you access to the handicap stalls in that covered parking garage. Those lanes are also necessary to allow for the right turn and the left turn movements, which are very heavy during all days, all times of the day, primarily during peak hours, and predominantly, right-turning movement at this intersection goes down to either Brand Boulevard where the Americana is, or finds additional parking in the alley parking lot located behind Bevmo and the Neon Museum, and so it was necessary to maintain those two lanes of travel to make sure that the operations of that street, the parking garage, are maintained and not compromised.
Well, there's an entrance on Harvard, correct? But it's not two lanes, it's actually technically three lanes at the end. Wouldn't we be able to get rid of that one lane to help support the businesses on the other side and still be able to have your left turn coming in to the parking lot?
So the entrance to the Marketplace Garage from Harvard allows you to go either downstairs to the parking lot. The entrance from Artsakh allows you to go to that first-level area in front of the elevators where all the disabled parking is, to be able to get access to Artsakh itself. The way the parking garage is constructed gives you, prevents a challenge from eliminating access to it from both entrances, so that's predominantly one of the main reasons.
I mean, I'd like to hear what my colleagues think on this, but I don't know how you would reconfigure this, but having that side closed in front of the parking structure and then making the sidewalk just the space for small businesses doesn't really make sense to me, so. And then, lastly, what stage are we on with the Curtain? You know, speaking of, you know, adding shade and green versus heat, the artwork named Curtain at the entrance.
So currently, the Library Arts and Culture Department is finalizing the agreements with the artist of the Curtain to move forward into design.
You know, I'd like to see something that's more inviting and provides shade versus heat in the area. Do you have any comments that you'd like to make on this?
Mayor Kasakian, members of council, Councilmember Asarian, Gary Shafer, Director, Library Arts and Culture. This, the Curtain piece was, first, you know, this project, obviously, as we've, we've heard from my colleague, has been, council's been working on since 2018, and we've moved through various stages on it. Council decided to go forward with putting art on it, one direction was three pieces. Council then directed us to hire a consultant on it, so we've kind of put all of those pieces in place, council, commission approved that, and council approved the artwork, so the stage we're at now is finalizing the contract with the artist, but I do have our consultant here who perhaps can speak more to it if you have questions. Okay. Okay. I'll introduce Bo Bass from the Bass Project.
Hi, how are you? Is there anything you'd like to add to this?
We don't have any questions in terms of...
So, the artist hasn't started the work, correct? We don't have a contract currently?
No. I think as Mr. Schaefer sort of alluded to, we've gone through an extensive process where the, you know, with the Arts Commission, we selected locations based on Studio 111, the landscape consultant here. We selected locations, approved those with the Arts Commission, did an extensive outreach and process of artist selection. The final artists were selected and concepts were approved by Arts Commission, and then again by council. And there was a lot of strategic thinking beyond just these three pieces. There actually, as part of the project, we're gonna be installing 10 pieces across the city. The majority of the budget is being spent here in the Arts and Entertainment District, because we felt like that was where the concentration of the public would be able to access. And even the three pieces on Artsakh, Bountiful is really designed as an overhead, there's active benches and seating as part of the actual sculpture, including a significant section of shaded area. And that was selected there because of where the new streetscaping was sort of shaping, where we were hoping to allow the public to congregate, to sit, to engage, to have coffee, dine, you know. Also, Bountiful is set up to be an area where they can hold small events. The north side, Tamikohar, is a smaller sculpture, but again, designed to be a piece that is, can be sat around and engaged with. There's benching designed to go around that piece as well. And Gateway, you know, we don't want, as we look to curate artwork across the cities, to have the same thing over and over and over again. So, one of the things that we all really liked about Gateway, but I think that the Arts Commission loved about Gateway is, and if you actually look on the map, it should be set back a little bit farther from Broadway, but it's the scale of piece, you know, Bountiful and Tamikohar both scale from farther away and from a human scale. Gateway is something that the public will be able to drive under. And again, if you think about cities that have sort of these gateways into neighborhoods, there's oftentimes, you know, there's a reason we have these gateways into the city, and we like that piece particularly because of its ability to actually literally act as a gateway into Artsakh.
And Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, Councilmember Asatran, to answer your question, you know, the artist hasn't started the work, because we haven't signed the contract with them yet. So, it hasn't been executed. Until such time that we have an agreement in place, they will not start the work.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Najarian?
But, I mean, with all due respect to the new composition of council, we had discussed this, and we had been through this, and in fact, there were a couple of options that we had looked at, and it was the direction of council at that point to move forward.
Noted. Thank you. Let me just ask, I'm sorry, Councilmember Najarian. Councilmember Asatran, do you have other points that you want to bring up or questions?
No, I'd like to hear the public comment.
Okay.
The one thing, Councilmember, I'll point out in terms of the contracts and why it was approved a while ago and we're still here, a lot of work has been actually done even outside of contract with both the artists, with planning. We've had to do soil samples. There's a lot of pre-engineering and planning to make sure that when we sign artists' contracts, the budgets are appropriate and all of the sort of, the technical logistics are prepared.
Thank you. We do have some speakers here in chambers and also one caller. I have cards from Tony Gafafyan, Ani Gafafyan, and Anna Gevorkyan. You all wish to speak separately, or, yes? Then, Tony, you'll be up. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, good afternoon. I just wanted to continue the issue that when Ellen mentioned about the closure of the parking lot, there was another entrance on Harvard. Actually, when you go in, once you're in, you can make a left, all the handicap parking is there. As well as when you just go in, there's a lot of parkings on the left and right side that is all reserved. So, if the issue was to do with handicap access of parking, it would be very easy to be done, because you already have that. If you haven't seen it, you can, once you go in, you can go downstairs, you can go upstairs, you can make a left to the handicap parking, or you can make a right, where they can put more additional handi- parkings. There's approximately about, against the wall and again, front of it, there's approximately about 20 parking spots, at least right now, that is just reserved. I don't know who it's reserved for, but if they had to do a modification and change, I think that would work really well. And the second thing is, as we all know, there's a lot of new buildings being built and built, and there's so many people on the streets walking, less driving, and there's so many demand of coffee shops, restaurants, people like to, you know, walk, enjoy the day. And I think that if one side is closed and the other side is open, it's kind of like a give and take, you know, like, one block up, the whole thing is closed. And if you ever went there, or if you go there, you can see a lot of families go there with their kids, they have a coffee, sit around, walk around, do things. And I think it would be perfect, just like, you know, Thursday is prominent in Santa Monica City. It's not as big as that, but I think if the whole thing was closed, it would be excellent for all the business people. You know, we have the sushi place, we have the coffee shop, we have the bar, we have the other restaurants, and I think it would be perfect. If you're ever in the area, weekends, please, walk around. Everybody's on their foot. People don't like to drive anymore. They want to enjoy, they want to walk, they want to go here, they want to go there. I think she made a good point, that maybe if they can take a look at it again, there's a way to fix the issue of the handicap parking.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gafafyan. All right, before you walk away, Councilmember...
Well, I just have a question. I'm not understanding where your café is and what kind of...
It's a corner of Harvard and Broadway.
Oh, it's up here. I was looking at the wrong side.
It's right across from the Glendale Library. And it's good, you know, you have a lot of students coming to the library to study, they're working.
Right next to Oak and Vine.
Artsakh and Harvard.
It's literally the corner. I don't understand. What is, what's the problem?
Yes, right next to it.
They would like to have...
Oh, next to it on Harvard?
Yes. No, it's on Artsakh, but the corner of Harvard. So, it's my salon and then my café, both of them are on Artsakh, but the cross street is Harvard.
If, it's right next to Oak and Vine on Harvard, but it's also next to the salon on Artsakh.
I think we can all look at our diagrams and hopefully figure that out. Let me give the other speakers. Thank you, Mr. Gafafyan.
Thank you for your time.
Let me give Ani Gafafyan a chance to speak.
I am also the owner of my salon and my café. So, that whole space was the salon before. We've owned that salon over five years. And as you all know, when COVID came, it hit our business really, really hard, and we had to decide what to do with all that space. So, finally, we opened the café. We're doing great, we're bringing a lot of people over to that side, and then boom, I was excited that we were gonna close the street. It was really gonna make my business better. And then now, I'm hearing that it's not gonna be closed, and that's really concerning me, because it's gonna really help my business if you close down the whole street. And if you talk about it, on that side where you're thinking of closing, there's only entrances, or no, it's only exit. And in front of my business, it's only entrance. What if you close that part, and like on Harvard, there's entrance and exit? And do the same on northern side of the south Artsakh. Do one lane entrance and then another lane exit, and add more handicap like you're planning to add? Because this way, there's very speed, people that drive very fast on that street, very bad. And it's hurting my business, people, you know, it's, people are sitting outside eating, and I see all those fast cars driving. That will be controlled if we close the street, or at least if it's just one lane open. I'm really concerned about my business. I really, really, really want that street to be closed, full traffic.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gafafyan. We'll have a continued discussion. We're just, this is an opportunity for everyone to express themselves from the public, share their thoughts. Next is Anna Gevorkyan.
Sorry for my English.
It's all right.
Good, yeah. So, I agree with Ani, I'm her partner, and will be very happy if you close the part of our business, in front of our business, this part, because we have a lot of teenagers, a lot of kids. For example, my kids go to library, and then they walk to the café, and there is a lot of cars. It's very dangerous, because there is a space for pedestrians, right? And it would be better if you closed it, because, I don't know, there is, I've been in a lot of countries, and there is a lot of relaxing spaces for like tourists, for everybody, but there is only Americana when they, the people can go and just to walk there. And it would be better if we'll have, it's hard in Glendale, it would be better if we'll have more relaxing spaces, more, so when the, where the people can meet each other, when they can have a cup of coffee, they can talk, they can, we can make there many entertainments, like arts, like music, some music, I don't know. There is no places to go for kids, for teenagers, I don't know. If we'll, if you closed it, it would be better for everybody, I think. It's not for only businesses, and for kids, for people, for everybody.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Can I add one more thing?
You can't do that from the audience, but I can ask you a question. Sir, would you like to add one more thing?
Yes, please.
Come up to the podium.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out what they said exactly, they're 100% right. There's a lot of people who, you know, we were talking earlier, what's the speed limit? I guess you were asking, the speed limit could be 15 or 20, but a lot of people are driving 40, 50. Lot of teenagers speeding is like a racetrack. And, you know, sometimes you get concerned, because we have a front patio seating, we have a right patio seating, and we're like, God hope not, you know, what if somebody loses control? It's gonna be very dangerous. So, that would be another issue to look over and maybe try to close the whole thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And we have one caller, and we won't take any more comments on this. This will be the last comment. Mr. Milano?
Mr. Milano is our caller. You are on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Merrick Sackin, members of the City Council, that particular street of what used to be called Maryland, in Artsakh, had so much potential from the very beginning, and I remember applauding the investment of $5 million that the city originally put to change that street into a livable, workable, exciting place. And I've seen it throughout the years, and I think the idea that somebody came up with in closing it off and allowing interest to the parking was an excellent idea. But what I see missing here is perhaps an idea that was brought up by one of the councilmembers with regard to how it would look if we were to take a picture or a sample from Europe. I used to think that this would be an ideal place that would look something like Las Ramblas in Barcelona. There's another area close to the port of Barcelona with lots of little shops and restaurants and music that becomes quite alive. What is missing, I think, is the opportunity to have really exciting venues. They don't need to be very large shops, but they need to be exciting with regard to food and engaging. The type of shops that are on that street just do not lend for any type of excitement. I imagined a place where there'd be plenty of small restaurants with different types of food, maybe different types of music in the evening, something that is a place to go to that we don't, where we don't simply depend on the Americana for the type of nightlife that is needed. The fact that it is so close to the new entrance to the library is fantastic. So, I think that the focus maybe should be placed on the types of businesses that would be attracted, and I don't know how much leadway the city has, but I think that the focus, if it is placed there, will bring the type of people and excitement that this particular area of Glendale needs. Anyway, that's my opinion, and I hope you guys get a chance to consider the businesses that would make up the environment where people can come together. Thanks.
Right. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask a few questions of staff, and I'd like to make a few comments, because I didn't get a chance, I wanted to get all my colleagues the opportunity. Can we go back to the proposed design of the north block, please? I'm not sure which slide, 11, it's slide 11. Slide 11? Okay. So, on this, and I know it's just a rendering, but is the side where there's going to be the seating going to be at grade with the sidewalk, Mr. Oganessian?
Merrick Sackin, yes, that is correct. It's going to be at grade with the current sidewalk.
So, there will not be a dip? Yeah, okay. All right. So, here's one of the questions I have is, in the rendering, if you look in the far-off distance, which is not as far as people may think, objects in mirror are closer than they appear, or whatever the saying is, you see some umbrellas and you see some seating. Yet currently, most of the seating and activity happens to be on the side where you want to put the Tamikohar artwork, right? Would it not make more sense to have it on the other side, where you have some retail shops, and then bring the umbrellas and the seating to where you have a longstanding coffee shop, and people are more accustomed to sitting there? Or whoever, I'm asking you, because you're making the presentation, but whoever would like to answer that?
So, Merrick Sackin, this is only a rendering, as you indicated in the beginning, the Tamikohar statue, ground-level structure, is gonna have available seating around it and on the sides of it, where the current seating capacity is not impacting the Urartu Coffee Shop or any of those.
Color me skeptical, because I don't know if that, you're gonna have a pretty sizable public piece of art, the seating will be surrounding it, which is not always the most conducive for, let's say, a group of four people to sit around and have a conversation. It will be seating, but it won't be coffee shop-style seating. To me, it would just make more sense to have it pushed to the other end of the block, and it seems like, in terms of pieces of art and works of art, the other end of the block doesn't really have much. I'm looking at the consultant as well, seated, if, I don't know if that's something that you guys have, you have a heart set in stone in terms of the location of where Tamikohar goes, but from someone who frequents Artsakh, I'm certain more than you do, I would say that that is something that people would like, to see the chairs and tables remain where they are.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I can say that what, the artwork is located there, because it's something that we worked with Studio 111 to sort of place. Tamikohar is actually being designed with, you know, imagine like a public square fountain that has integrated benching around it and along the side. So, it's, the artist studio as well, really thoughtful in terms of designing that benching around it to make it as active and engaging as a piece of artwork as possible, versus something just sort of sits on the corner. So, it's designed to actually have people sit and engage with it. If you remember, it lights up at night, so in the evenings, it actually also becomes an active part of the space. I don't think the artist studio would be opposed to moving it to a different side, if that was something the council would determine, but right now, it's been integrated into Studio 111's plan, which is where, which is why it's sort of placed where it's placed.
So, there's a number of seats and chairs in that location, and one side of the street is going to be, if the plan is approved as such, and quite honestly, I'm for the entire closure of the, the closure of the entire block as well, but if I was to stick to the plan, as it's been proposed, we're removing an entire side of the street. And I think that, you know, is gonna push everyone who likes to sit on the other side, also partially because you get shade on that side a little earlier in the day, it's gonna be squeezing them up against the other side. You may think, you know, it may be the case that Tamikohar may actually provide an amenity to the coffee shop. Again, I don't know if that would necessarily be the case. I think that people do like tables and chairs, and the other end of the block doesn't have much by way of art. That's one thought. The other one is, in terms of the umbrellas that were proposed, my understanding was that the alleyway is also going to be used. Is it not the alleyway that's between Brand and Artsakh? Is that part of this whole process and this design, Mr. Oganessian?
Correct. It's going to receive lighting improvements, signage improvements, and some walking improvements.
Okay. Hopefully, some power washing improvements as well, because it could use it. But my understanding was that there would be also umbrellas in that location, or that's where I thought it was going to be, Councilmember Najarian, that's why I wasn't commenting on it. on it. You know, in terms of shade structures, I don't know what the, I don't know where I can fall on that because I do like, I do think people being able to see the sky would be nice on a nice day. I mean, I think the height of the structures do provide some shade and during the high afternoons, true, there's a lot of direct sunlight, but I think that can be addressed with some umbrella and other creative shade structures. But I would like to see that umbrella concept, which was brought to council, incorporated somewhere in this whole area because, you know, the alleyway that right now has no activity on it, if there's creative ways of activating it, which I don't necessarily see, would be my preference. You know, the original planning and layout of these garages were very poorly designed, and I know that they've hampered you in your somewhat, in your best efforts to be creative. But if we can go to slide 14 and to the points that were raised, I do think that we do need to consider some of the comments that were made by the Gafafyan, the Gafafyans, the Gafafyan family and others. In terms of, if we're looking to activate some, an area, we do have restaurants on one side of the street that could definitely feed into this kind of European al fresco-style atmosphere that we're creating versus the side that we're, and again, I understand the entrance to the parking lot, as you have studied it, may not allow it, but I would ask you to reconsider it because where you're proposing that seating area right now, there is nothing. It would literally create a seating area outside of a parking lot. And even though that there is a first-floor office space that I know is being used by our parking, I don't want to call them concessions.
Enforcement, yeah.
Yeah, and is it parking enforcement? But it's basically an office space, and at one point, there was a tiny office there that was a shoe repair shop, but there's nothing else. Whereas on the other side, that's where most of the activity is happening and would naturally feed into it. I'd like us to succeed in this. And in this diagram, one of the areas that, for instance, is interesting to me is, well, I hope that we figure this out. I like this part of town, but I don't like walking necessarily down that stretch over in the diagram where you see the blue-white striping on the ground and that stop sign. Whoever designed this marketplace has a delivery area that when it is open, it's in between two places, is where all of the garbage is collected. It smells awful. People are nodding their heads because you cannot walk past it without hold. It is awful. It is absolutely poorly maintained, and I don't know why we would want to push people to walk along that side. I mean, I would like, first of all, for it to be better maintained. I don't know how we do that, but it is a recipe for failure if we have that. I mean, in this diagram, there's two people walking hand in hand. I'm assuming they're smiling. In real life, they would not be smiling. They would probably be covering their noses as they're walking past that. I think that's something that we really ought to consider, how we situate things and how that area works now and how it can work better. And I would like us to see us try and push the areas where we have the people that are sitting and engaged and interacting be less abutting the parking lot, the parking structure where there's nothing on the ground level. And perhaps that was the design, but I think it would work better on the other side where there's more pedestrian activity. Councilmember Naj, those are most of my comments. I mean, there's other things as well that I've thought of. I will just say that I would like to see the council and the public be more excited about this project, and I think it's slightly telling that no one is jumping up hooray saying, "We're super, super jazzed about what's going to happen to Artzach." So with that, let me turn to Councilmember Najarian and then Councilmember Devine.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't ready, really ready to redesign this thing today. I was not expecting that that was the, the direction council was going. It was to more or less approve the final design and get it on to RFPs. That being said, I'm not in a position to start moving seating areas around until I see exactly what it means. And I know that when we were designing this, I don't think that Gafafyans had their, their, you know, cafe there. So it was not in our psyche at all. So I'm not sure where we're going, but I mean, if someone's asking for support for some particular design change, I cannot give that at this point. It's something I would need to see a little bit more of. And I'm not even sure what's being, what the request is.
So my comment is simply that, right now, if you were to look just at the rendering, right, and the rendering is not the whole picture, but most of the pedestrian activity is by design. We're trying to create pedestrian activity on the side of the street where there's not a lot of commercial activity to begin with. And we know that that goes hand in hand. If we look at places like Third Street Promenade, we look at even the area between the Galleria and Americana, we look at even the Americana, those are the places where people will spill out of the stores, they'll go in, they'll stop, you know, a weary spouse will sit down while their partner goes in to shop even more for the holidays. This is not that place to do it. There is traffic literally bisecting it, and my suggestion is, you know, is it something that can be reconfigured in a way where it allows a parking lot to, and again, this has more to do with whoever approved these initial designs for how these parking lots were designed with the entrances and the exits. But if there's a better way for us to do this, where this closure or semi-closure of Artzach truly succeeds in creating the type of space that we want, I would like to see that. And look, I'm, again, renderings are renderings. I love the fact that there's people playing chess out there and it looks very engaged and active. I don't know how often that's going to happen.
Weren't you here when we voted on this? This wasn't pre-2020.
Mayor, yeah, Mayor Sacken, Mayor City Council. So the item before you is the final design that was approved by the previous council, and I appreciate two or three of you were not on the council at the time. But we staff brought, and with the consultants, Studio 111, on two occasions in June and August of 2019, and staff was given direction to move forward with the conceptual designs. And I, again, fully appreciating that two or three of you were not on council. So the plans have been completed. If it's council's direction for a redesign, we'll have to go back to Studio 111, give them a change order to the contract, redesign the conceptual plans, bring them back to council, and then move it forward after that based on council's direction. But the item before you today was to adopt plans and specs and authorize going out to bid, just for point of clarification.
Councilmember Devine.
And City Manager, that was exactly going to be my point, was the fact that, you know, I appreciate the comments from my colleagues, but is this the time to start making these changes, these huge changes, or do we have to go back? We, how much did we pay Studio 111 to do these designs? And how many years did it take us to get to this point? How many decisions were made to get to this point? And then now, we're going to just stop it all? And I mean, we're like ready to put shovel to the ground, and all of a sudden, it's like we, we got to go back and redesign this whole, whole project?
Well, look, I mean, there's two, there's two sides of the street. If it is, if there is consensus, we can move forward with the north portion of the block, but I think the south portion of the block, the block closest to Harvard, requires a little bit more study. And, and, and I don't think that there would be necessarily objections to that. You know, I think that a lot of us have expressed an interest. That would be great to have the entire block closed of Artzach north of Broadway, but in the interest of timing, making sure that this project is realized, I would be supportive of that. But I think the south portion, Councilmember Devine and Councilmember Najarian do, does require us to, to look at it a little bit more carefully.
Yeah, Mayor Sacken, Mayor City Council, I understand where you're coming from. Again, if that's the council's direction, because these concept plans, what you see on the screen is the concept plan, but the final construction plans were based on these concept plans that were based on an analysis, parking analysis, traffic analysis, conversations with the property owners, business owners. Not saying that we cannot redo that, but if that's the council's direction, then that's, that's not what was in front of you.
I'd really like us to look over the southbound. We really have a seating area in front of a parking lot, and I think it would be great if we actually moved that area in front of the library that connects it to the Americana. I think the whole floor would be great. And again, having seating areas with nothing around it in front of a parking lot makes zero sense to me.
All right. Well, Councilmember Najarian.
I mean, something that we looked at was Home Goods. There is a pickup lane for people that buy furniture and buy large accessories from Home Goods. That is a yellow zoning, loading zone that I've used many times. So we're going to ask people to carry their couches across the seating area to some other spot. I mean, I don't know. This has been looked at, and nothing is perfect, but to get back to this point and throw away everything that was done, at least on the south end, is a little bit frustrating for this council.
Well, and it also seems like all of a sudden, we're, we're doing all this because one business moved in after the fact, and now we're changing the whole entire block. And I just, I just find it kind of, I mean, I feel for them, but I, you know, they may not be there for the next 10 years. Somebody else might move in there. And it's just like, you know, we're doing this for, for just a, a one business that's coming in at the last, the 11th hour and saying, well, we're not happy with the way this is configured. And as the City Manager has said, this, this Studio 111 did traffic studies, parking study. I mean, they, they did the whole nine yards, and we paid them for that. And they came up with this concept, and we agreed that it was the best for the area. And I just, I just am kind of, I guess, frustrated that all of a sudden, we're, we're going to change the whole concept and, and everything about it on a, on a day when we should be. And I am excited about this. I think it's going to be great. And, you know, to be changing this and then costing more money, more time, and, you know, it's, again, kicking the can down the road, and it's just frustrating to, to be at this point.
Councilmember Rotman.
Yeah, I, I understand the frustration. For me, I, you know, because I was also kind of came into this not really knowing what I could and couldn't do here. But the problem is, when, when a project, you know, starts, you know, at a point in time and, and a lot of time passes, the world changes. And I think we have gone through the pandemic. I think people do have a different attitude about outdoor living and dining. Yes, the council has changed. And so when I look at it, and I didn't even know about this shop, I was, I was feeling that this is really kind of overly car-oriented, especially this, this south block. I think the north block a little bit also, and I, I would really prefer not to have cars traverse from one end to the other. I think that would be better. I think, I think there is more of an interest in the community to move towards these kind of pedestrian-only areas, and I think we could get closer to that. And I do, you know, I get it that we were so far along, but if we don't make the change now, you know, it'll, it'll get even harder later once we start, you know, digging and putting in infrastructure. So if we are going to try to make this more of a pedestrian area, this is the time to do it. And I, I, I do think it's, it's worth relooking, especially at this south block. And the north block, like the mayor said, is, I'm more comfortable with that. My only thing there would be really to see if we can not have it be something that cars can pass through from one end to the other, because it really isn't what this place should be about. And, and we're just, we're kind of building it around that. The Home Goods thing, yeah, I don't understand the, the situation there. I mean, Home Goods is really not the ideal use for this, you know, what we want to create here, but it's there. So I don't know how we deal with that. But anyway, so if, if there were a, we're finding a consensus, my vote would be to relook at the south block and make it more pedestrian-oriented, less car-oriented.
Mayor Sacken, Member City Council, unfortunately, we don't, we didn't ask Studio 111 to be here because we thought this was going to be the acceptance of the final design and moving forward with a bidding phase. But if you prefer, we can invite them to, we can continue this item, invite them to council meeting, because they conducted the parking study, the traffic analysis, the circulation, traffic circulation, as well as dialogues that they had with the property owners and the business owners. Perhaps they can provide more clear responses as to the, their, their thinking, their justification of this concept designs and that culminated in the plans, the construction plans.
Let me make one last comment.
Yes, Councilmember Najarian.
I find it incumbent on my colleagues that when we get to a point such as this, and it's their intention to make a rather dramatic halting and cessation of this project, that they let staff know. So we could have brought in 111 and have them be here with us today. This is like a sneak attack, I think, and I don't think.
Councilmember Najarian, I object.
May I finish, please?
If you're going to use a term like the sneak attack.
Do I have the floor or not, Mr. Mayor?
Continue.
A surprise objection to a, what was staff obviously thought was a routine and perfunctory approval, that's not the way this council should do business. You got problems with it? Fine. Let staff know. Let's bring in the consultants here so we can address these issues, rather than drop the surprising comments at the last minute. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember, I appreciate your views and I appreciate your experience. I will tell you that I did not have an opportunity to have my staff briefing this week because of other prior obligations and engagements. I've done my best to try to maintain a organized schedule as best I can. So if these come as a surprise to staff or to anyone, I apologize. But I am not going to ignore my feelings and my views on a project that I believe can be an asset to the community simply because it catches someone off guard or off surprise. That's the whole point of the public deliberation process. If that means this gets delayed by a couple of weeks, so be it. If it's worth doing, it's worth doing right, no matter how long it takes. All right? We are not going to rush through a project. I'm certainly not going to rush through a project simply because, you know, previous councils or previous individuals had felt that that is the best design that they could possibly come up with or approve. With that, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to delay the, the conversation and bring back Studio 111 to, to get, be able to answer some of our questions.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, as Satrian.
Yes.
Rotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Sacken.
Yes. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
All right, we stand adjourned. Let's wait, and once it changes over, have a roll call for City Council to read the closed session items into the record. All right, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers, as Satrian.
Here.
Rotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Can you please read the closed session items into the record?
Closed session item, A, public employment attorneys, B, conference with real property negotiators. Agency negotiators attending the closed session are Rubik Olanyan, Michael J. Garcia, Gillian Van Miden, John Tachtalian, Bradley Calvert, Jason Bradford, Onig Bulanikyan, Peter Zovak, and Mike Fortney. Instructions to the negotiators will concern the price and terms for the acquisition of real property. Property number one, location 332 to 346 West Cerritos and 341 Muraloma. Negotiating parties, Cephalonia Holdings LLC. Property number two, location 215 to 221 North Central Avenue and 314 to 322 Salem Harvard Buildings LLC. Negotiating parties, Harvard Buildings LLC. C, conference with labor negotiators. The city does a The city designated negotiators attending the closed session are Rubik Olanyan, John Tachtalian, Michael J. Garcia, Gillian Van Miden, Paula Adams, and Jason Bradford. The names of the employee organizations are Glendale City Employees Association, Glendale Management Association, Glendale Police Officers Association, Glendale Fire, Firefighters Association, and IBEW Local 18, Unit 40. Unrepresented employees, executives, and confidential employees.
All right. Do you expect reporting out on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, anticipate reporting on item 1A.
That will recess to closed session.